Thank you everybody for coming. We're going to go ahead and get started, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. Okay, and if we could all go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first order of business is that we are going to approve the agenda. Okay? I move that we approve the agenda. Second? Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda to include a report from the Chair to be added after public comments.
All in favor?
Yes.
Well, we just forgot. Right. So we're going to add a Chair report after public comments. Right. Okay. All right. So I know you guys are pulling out your public comment cards. You had a few already. And I just want, thank you so much for everybody that is here. This is fabulous, this exchange of ideas and bringing up different perspectives and everything, so just very much, we, the committee, appreciate this very much. So, Mr. Fletcher, would you like to start?
Sure. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Bill Fletcher. I have been here 21, almost 21 years, have four kids coming up through the district. Three of them are still in district schools right now. I wanted to just make a comment about suspensions and how they affect academics. There are smart kids in the district, but even smart kids do stupid things. And when they have a nonviolent offense, that, according to district policy, would mandate a multiple day suspension. For example, my son, a sophomore at Bluffton High, got caught vaping in the bathroom, and that was an automatic four day suspension. And so he was already struggling in a few classes, and then four days out of school. I didn't put up a fight about it because we all signed the Code of Conduct, the manual at the beginning of the year. He signed it. He understands what the penalty is and why it is. But having gone through that, you know, a month or two ago, he is just finally now, third quarter just ended, what, a week ago? He finally got caught up after missing those four days of instruction. And I just would like the committee to take into account, anytime a child misses class, they're missing, and I realize that, hey, there was a, this was a penalty for doing something, but in my opinion as a parent, the fact that it was nonviolent, I think the punishment really didn't fit the crime. And as a result, his academics and his ability to learn in class is suffering. Now, I don't know the statistics, but I've heard from other parents that literally hundreds of students have gone through a suspension because of similar instances like this. And I believe, what I heard was that at Bluffton High last year, 200, over 200 kids were suspended for four days for vaping specifically. And while I understand the district, the administration wants to have bathrooms that are safe and healthy for the students again, I just think that when you look at 200 students being suspended four days each, that's 800 days of misinstruction at four classes, that's 320 hours of misinstructions for those kids. So I just point that out as a parent. I'm not looking for you guys to necessarily make a change. This is just food for thought, as you guys sit down and think about what can be done to perhaps improve the academics of the kids. And I think what you'll find is, if the kids that are doing well in class are doing these things that ticket suspended, the kids that aren't doing so well might be more susceptible to that, and it's not helping them either. So perhaps there's a more constructive method to get the message across, and that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsey Waller?
I'm Lindsey Waller. I have a couple days throughout the district, but I'm here on some Fed Moms Act Community Day. They wrote, "Some people send children to schools outside of the district. This means when they have issues, they can't turn to their district rep, as they don't represent that school, or the school's district rep, as they don't represent their parents." Some parents have even reached out to a superintendent and have also been left without guidance. This leaves many Fed parents feeling unrepresented by the school. It is not clear who we should turn to when we have problems. If there is someone that is concerned with the lack of personal influence and trust alone, there may be less communication issues between parents. The school is needing this, needing less frustration and at times, stability. So we're just kind of looking for more care for some things and...
Chris Waller?
So I also am speaking for a couple moms that aren't here today because they're traveling. But the overall consensus seems to be communication, as Lindsey mentioned. The parents are feeling that there's a gap in when something goes wrong in that room of, you know, whether it's IEP or with school administration, whatever is happening, they feel like they're not left with, you know, somebody to fall back on as a backup or an advocate even. So they're looking for improvement in that area. The other feeling is that they would like, as I've mentioned several times, because I would also like to see a community committee, whether it's a subcommittee of some kind, made up of vested community members, stakeholders, and parents with regard to special education, because I think our department, like Brenda does a great job with the resources she has, but there are things that, you know, she's not in the schools every, well, she is in the schools every day, I should take that back. She's not in every classroom every day, and not necessarily knowing what's, there is, there does seem to be a gap. Like usually when I am reported, if something's reported to me by a parent, and I go to Brenda, she hasn't heard about it. And it's, you know, to me, it's, and these are things that I hear about repeatedly. And so there is some kind of disconnect between our schools, between, you know, the administration or the special ed team in the school, and the district and the parents. And we have to work on that, and I think the best way to do that is to come together, you know, in a smaller group, and really try to figure out where these connections are missing, and then reset them. The third thing that I wanted to talk about, which I've also mentioned in the past, and I'm hoping that you'll address, is we, obviously, our number one problem is teacher retention in all areas, but especially in special education. And specifically with aides. When you look at the pay scale for those special need aides, they're only paid 70 cents more on the dollar, and they deal with a whole host of additional responsibilities and are required to have an entirely different skill set. So I really hope that you'll look at that pay scale and really try to balance it a little bit more, make it more equitable for the service that they get. Thanks.
Thank you. Leanne Howard?
Hi. I'm Leanne Howard. My, I have two kids in the school district, one of which I've been dealing with multiple issues concerning IEPs and 504s since he was in fifth grade. I really think that this is an area that we need a little bit more, I guess, another committee, as Ms. Waller had pointed out. With me, I have a folder of all kinds of things that have gone overlooked or maybe misidentified with my son. He's 14, in ninth grade, and he's receiving hundreds on assignments where he barely articulates a complete thought in a sentence. He doesn't articulate a complete paragraph with proper grammar, appropriate vocab, page-related vocabulary, capitalizations in wrong places and things of that nature. I'm actually having to go outside of the school to get the proper resources to help him. It's an ongoing battle that I've had for the last four years now of meeting after meeting. And some schools have not even given me the appropriate response of an actual meeting, just set me aside after weeks of ignoring phone calls and said, "These are his test scores. His test scores show that he doesn't need it when he's not meeting standards. He's not meeting standards on standardized tests, on the math, the pass." And this is an area where I've seen and heard from dozens of parents, where they actually go outside of the school district and homeschool because they can't get the needs, their students need math. But I'm a parent who can't do that because of some of my child's other needs, primarily ODD. And he directs a lot of that at me because for the last three years, he tells me every day that I should just give up on him because everybody else has. That when he asks for help or when he needs help, he feels that he has nobody in his corner because he continues to struggle, and he lashes out. His therapist has said that he's at risk for depression because of these ongoing issues. And I would just, I really think that we need a subcommittee in our district that looks at these issues and looks at primarily special education resources, and why borderline students are falling so far behind before they're actually gaining help. And I've brought this issue up to as high as board members. I've been told with respect to, you know, receiving hundreds on work, it's not deable of a hundred, that that's, it's not modification and it's not being misidentified as a hundred because the entire class is also being graded on content only, contrary to that. And I've been told in IEP meetings that, you know, it doesn't matter if he can't read or write because they do, everything on computers know anyways.
Thank you. That's, oh, there you go. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. Community members, senior staff, other board members, thank you all so much for being here because these are very, very important issues. And the, this committee is working, after today's meeting, I think you'll see, you know, we're having a path, we've got a path going, and to be able to address these things. All right. We need to next approve the March 6 meeting minutes. So I have a motion.
I move that we approve the March 6 meeting minutes.
All agree?
Yep.
We amended the agenda so that there would be a Chair report. I just wanted to just make a comment about the ad hoc K-8 committee that we did not get to at our last meeting because we had a shortened amount of time. There is a plan unfolding as to how to resurrect that committee and which way to go with it, but we're going to start with getting information about the actual educational impact of K-8 schools as compared to typical elementary or in middle. So I've spoken with Dr. Berg about it, and he is tasking senior staff to come up with a report on, you know, what the educational impact of K-8 schools are, not just anecdotal, not just looking at data of our current K-8 schools and saying, "Okay, so let's compare. What's the real impact? And what is the literature? What's the research? What are the peer-reviewed researchers saying about K-8 schools?" Okay, so that's just kind of a, an update on where we'll go with that. So we're going to start with that. When that comes in, then we'll, that will be our inaugural meeting for that. Okay? The focus of today's meeting is a continuation of looking at special education. At our last meeting, Ms. Hunt gave us a wonderful overview of, from A to Z, of special education. And when she presented that, of course, it bubbled up a lot of questions, all right? But even backing up prior to that, we don't have access to this, do we? That's okay. I mean, I can just, prior to that, Dr. Berg and, I think it was November, had presented to the board some information about Who Is Buford? I think some of you all were probably at that meeting. And at that meeting of Who Is Buford, there was a chart that demonstrated areas where there were some significant achievement gaps, significant, all right? So as an academic committee, we said, "Okay, there is one glaring area of an achievement gap, and that is with our students with disabilities." Okay? If you were, if you were at that meeting, and I know Ms. Cushingberry will get that up in a minute, but for students, for the achievement gap, for students scoring approaches, meets, or exceeds that are disabled, we've had a 45 percent achievement gap. Okay, that's glaring. That, more than, more than any of the areas that were broken out, more so than, let's see, we had some other significant ones. We had, you know, limited English proficiency, negative 9.4 percent. Students in poverty, negative 8.9 percent. Students with disabilities, negative 45. Okay, so that's where we started. The data is driving where we're going with this. So today's, today's focus, and I asked Ms. Allman to prepare some information that shows the co-identification of students with disabilities that are also in the achievement gap, all right? So once we are able to look at those, those students that are in the achievement gap but have disabilities, we can start having that conversation about, okay, why is it, why is the achievement gap so glaring? Why is it a negative 45 percent? So Ms. Allman is going to present today some information. We had it grown up, we don't, and it's going to be up here in a second. So that Excel spreadsheet you didn't put together, Ms. Allman, if you could start talking about how, maybe even how you, you know, developed it, and then, again, remember, our focus is the co-identification of students with disability and the achievement gap.
Okay. It's a very difficult thing to look at with Fed because students can be in Fed for many reasons, sometimes more than one. And so when we're looking at individual students, it's a little more complicated than it is if it's just an EL student or an African-American student, something like that. And a lot of these kids... Sorry. I know. Yeah. Well, we're, thought we were going to have it up there.
That'll be great.
So when you're looking at special ed kids, a lot of times, their IQ and everything is like everybody else's, but they have something that causes them not to be able to either learn as fast or cognitively perform to the standard of the SE-ready. So when you look at this paper, you'll see that we've got the different ages and a little bit about the high school kids, that's kind of different. High school and with Fed and everybody is different because it's not just reading and math, it's not even the content test specifically to that. For example, a Fed kid that has a disability in English but not in math, you know, that's two different things. They're typically fine with math, but maybe not in English. So the first column that you look at, that is zero gap indicators. These are the students that are not in the gap, who are the ones that pass the test. Am I correct, Jennifer?
Yeah, those are the, well, those are the zero gap of the, of the criteria.
Right.
So what we did is, we took our child count, if you look down here, our 2,226 students, broken down by criteria, okay? And then, of course, any student under 10, we did not include for identical reasons. And then we also, and I don't know if everyone in the community is aware, or even in the school systems, that adult ed falls under the school system, so those 12 adult ed students are not in the report. And when we see community-based Battery Creek, Buford, Bluffton, Hilton Head, and Will Grinch Cluster, we're responsible for child line through IDA, which is through Baby Net. So we actually serve kids, students actually, in daycare, private homes, and others. So those aren't part of the factor. That's why when you see 2148, it doesn't add up to the 78, okay? So we excluded those students. But what Rettin Data Services and Bonnie and Daniel and I did is, we talked about LRE, least restricted environment. So when we broke them down, broke them down into the criteria, in the regular education class, less than 10 hours per week. So that's what you're going to see there, LREs, where the children are receiving the most of their services. And what Ms. Allman is actually saying, a majority of our students who are identified are use LD or speech. So our LD students might meet the eligibility criteria for reading, but they might not be achieving for math. They might be getting their specially designed instruction in reading, but not in math, and that's taught by the core content teacher in the math classroom.
And sometimes students have more time in the regular classroom and either go out for special services or the teacher comes into the classroom with that, that also...
And with the gap also, and I think that we know this, but just want to share, that we do have students that are, that take the South Carolina AL, significantly cognitively impaired. That falls into our gap, and these are some of our students that are in severe and profound classes, which we have across the district. They're measured, and their data goes into our data. They take the AL, and then we have some others that are probably moderate ID, mild ID, that might take SE-ready and SE-pass. And we have to follow the state criteria for these assessments because in South Carolina, we have one diploma for those students. You know, we talked about, last board meeting, about the high school credential, but it's not a diploma. So we are a little unique in this state as where the students are assessed, and we go through IEPs. But what we've broken it down into, the pupils in poverty, the ELS, the AAs, the gap indicators, as outlined also in Dr. Berg. So this kind of gives you a little criteria of where our students are getting most of their services. Thus, I spoke about STETSN, which is inclusion, training our general ed teachers with our special ed teachers, because the majority of our students in special education are getting their core content in content classes with certified English, math teachers. When we talk about the self-contained students, we try to always double dip our students with services that they get inclusion and pullout, but some of our self-contained might need the specially designed instruction by the special ed teacher.
I want to interrupt on the STETSN. The STETSN training that a lot of our people have been through, it's an excellent, excellent thing to implement in a high school. I personally think that what we do with STETSN is good for all schools. It is, it has to do with operating in a school with inclusive practices rather than isolation practices. And I know that Ms. Hunt has done a lot, do you want me to talk about that?
Yeah, well, I can, I can, you can, or I can just explain. I know that, Ms. Ravine, you had asked a question. But what we used, when we received the MFS funds that I spoke about, that's money from the state for not making maintenance of effort, as a district, we chose to do STETSN inclusion. It was for the elementary and middle school. We had 16 schools initially that participated. You asked about the numbers. So all administrators with a buy-in had to attend a one-day session, July 31st, and then school teams of five or more attended August 1st, 2nd?
1st, 2nd, 3rd.
1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and we're talking of 2017, for a three-day intensive training at Buford Middle School, where we actually paid the teachers to come in to get buy-ins. In addition, with those funds, what we did is technical support days. So we had the folks that did the training, visit the schools, do observations, work with the school teams. So initially, we trained 100 people. Of the 100, only nine have actually left the district, but when they came for the technical supports for 17, 18, and they're just finishing up for 18, 19, anybody that's new on board, they're training. We're also incorporating ESOL teachers to come in because most of our students are actually in the general ed. So they get technical assistance by the four people that come. They get a write-up, they get a follow-up, they get recommendations that go to the principal and CC to me. So when I come back, what look-for's, they're in the classes, providing feedback. If it's Mr. Campbell's math class, they're saying, "Hey, we really liked how you did this, but we want to reference you to pair share. We want to reference you to how to appropriately co-teach," you know, and provide feedback. And it's been very effective. And I think I shared at the last meeting that Ms. Freida had asked for it in her plan for Hilton Head Middle because it's been very successful. And I did provide her some additional technical support days because of her, her school rating and such. So it's good for all students.
It's the concept of collaborative teaching, in other words, working together with teachers and including the students in that process, so everybody's...
Well, so if I, if I can, so getting back to the data here, if I understand this correctly, that the gray column are those students that are not identified in the achievement gap. Is that correct? So let's just take a look at LD, SLD. All right, 133 students either were met, and Bonnie, tell us again the criteria for not being in the achievement gap?
Means they passed the test.
With met, right? Met or approaches? Yes, which one?
I think this is met or exceeds.
Well, the achievement.
The approaches means they're close, but most of all.
Right, right. So the achievement gap for met or exceed, students with disabilities, according to Dr. Berg's report, was, you know, negative 34 percent.
Right.
Okay, so this, in this gray column, 133 students met or exceeded?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Out of 864 students identified as a primary disability of LD, is that, am I reading this correctly?
I'm reading it correctly.
Okay, so 133, can somebody that's got their phone out or calculator, what percentage is 133 out of 864?
12.
15.
15 percent. So 15 percent of our students with LD are making...
Assessing.
Okay, so...
Well, the SE-ready, they're making progress, but they're not achieving at the state assessment.
No, these, these are. These are the ones that are, that are...
Meeting.
Right, that are meeting. So that means 85 percent are not, okay? And out of that 85 percent, like Ms. Hunt said, certainly you have students that are taking SE-ready that we know, that they might be making progress. Every year you might see, you know, but they're not, but still, that's 85 percent that are that are not. So maybe 50 percent.
731 students, yeah.
So I think that's called a crisis. Let's look at our speech students. Let's look at our speech students as their primary disability. 129 students, now this is their primary, so we wouldn't be talking about students and self-contained, right? Because that's typically not their primary disability. So you have 129 students that passed, this is 3rd through 8th grade, passed SC Ready out of 432. Well, I'm going to just, that's...
30%.
Yeah. So I mean, 70% did not, of students with speech services. As speech is their primary disability...
And they're, yeah, and they're probably not getting any other specially designed instruction other than speech.
And they probably need it.
They're receiving their core instruction in the mainstream class.
Right, right. So, you know, my, which is a problem. I mean, we need to look at these students. I guess the next question is to look at these, to see if there's any difference in achievement with the students that are in the classrooms that have, with the teachers that have been trained with the STETSN, you know, and are using it with fidelity, because we would hope that that would have an impact, so.
That's one of the things we're going to...
Yeah, we're going to look at that. And then also, if a child meets or exceeds on SC Ready, and they're making progress in I Ready, and they're passing their math scores and doing well, those children are going to be in the mix. Probably the IEP teams are going to say, they no longer meet the eligibility of special education, because it's two-pronged. You can have a disability, but do you need specially designed instruction? So as these kids achieve, they're going out of the equation. So when we look at the ones that are meeting, every time we get the scores, we look and say, hey, you're making progress in I Ready, you're passing all your classes, you're making achievement in math, your SC Ready scores. So it's a different group of kids that keep on coming in. And we'll look at all the, I mean, each one of these numbers is actually a student who has a whole story, who we even actually look at the teachers. Is it me as a teacher that has an achievement gap with six special ed, but also nine regular ed students? You know, we look at data like that at the district level.
Well, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this or not, but with speech, you know, we have a difficult time keeping speech teachers.
Finding.
Finding them and then keeping them. That's a whole nother ballgame. So there are times that kids that have speech as one of their teachers that should be working with them, you know, will have gaps there too, because of that situation.
And I think it's important to note that speech, when we're talking about speech, we're not talking just articulation.
That's right.
We're talking language development, and that's critical to reading.
It is.
Yes.
So I think that's an important thing to note.
It is.
It is.
I was going to mention something of that sort. I mean, the extenuating circumstances of these individuals are almost immeasurable when they hit the classroom, hit the regular classroom, hit the components of competition and the ability to confidently speak or confidently write. It's, you know, it exponentially changes the productivity. And looking at the numbers, like we're looking at it, I don't know if it's going to help us understand, you know, how do these numbers compare with other special ed situations is one of the things we need to look at. Same kind of, kind of make order, same kind of demographics. How do our numbers look versus another district with the same kind of demographics in terms of the special ed gaps? Because we can't focus on special ed gaps as something that entirely lies in the special ed process, because like Brenda, I've been mentioning, those other programs that mainstream teachers have to infuse in their programs are the things that will change those numbers.
Yeah, it's definitely...
They go into their classroom, and, you know, we lose them, because we look at these numbers, other special ed child not doing well. But how much of the special ed teachings are going into the classroom?
Right, and then another thing, you know, we have, we have assistants that work in special ed, and the turnover with them is very significant, too. It's, I mean, it's, and then our pay for those employees, those 140 employees, is so low that it's hard to keep them.
And the ratios, I will share that, you know, to answer your question, just last week, I was at a state directors meeting. There's a gap in special ed across the state. And we always try to figure out what's the best way to remediate the students, because if you're going to set for SC Ready or SC Pass tests, you need to be in the class getting the core instruction. You don't need to be excluded, sitting over here where you don't hear the content. So we double dip, and sometimes we triple dip with interventionists to give them all of the supports. And I do think that, you know, I acknowledge and recognize there's achievement gap, but I think that sometimes we need to really focus on each student as an individual, and that's what we've done at the district with like our 100 Voices, try to take that child and say, what progress is this child making? Is he a first-grade reader now? And, you know, has he gained a year and a half in reading? And so that's what the IEP teams do. That's how IEPs are actually written, from this level to the next level. And we really look at the standards of what they need to be taught, so they are able to be successful on the exams that we give.
And I want to say, like, with the I Ready, I'm sitting here looking at the school percentages. You know, when you've got a program like I Ready that is expensive, and it's research-based and all of that happens, the research says that the number one failure reason is fidelity. So if a teacher is trained on how to do I Ready, but the teacher doesn't follow through exactly like it's supposed to be, it's probably not going to be where we want it to be. Because with I Ready, at the beginning of the year, they take a test, and then they do that three times in the year, and we look to see what kind of growth they are making. But that may or may not reflect what we expect to see on SC Ready. So it's a difficult process, the training for it is expensive, and teachers have to really work to make sure things happen like they're supposed to. Did I go too far?
No, that's what we actually do. We do take the benchmark, which actually talks about the skills that need to be taught and reinforced. And it's actually, you know, we have a teacher toolbox that inclusion teachers can do it for, use with their regular ed students as well. That's why we co-teach classes. And then we do another assessment in January. Our students are making progress, meeting their benchmarks, and that's why in the district we also do math, to measure them. So, you know, they're making progress. The correlation would be after we take all the same students, because if they leave, we don't have the second benchmark. And then if they're dismissed from special education, we don't have them in the SC Ready under the, in Power School, how we code them in the IFA. So then they fall out of that database, but they've made a lot of progress.
Well, my question is to Mrs. Allman and Mrs. Hunt, is, you know, I heard what you were saying about teacher assistants, is about we probably need more, and we're not retaining them. At what point have y'all, or maybe at what point do you go to the board, you got to know that, hey, we need some money to teach, to keep teacher assistants, so that we can get some consistency, help with the teachers in the classroom?
Well, I think that's why Dr. Berg is working so hard to address teacher pay and employee pay.
Right, but teachers' pay is different from teachers' assistance and classifieds. That's two, those are two different peoples paid. And if we're losing them, then obviously, if they're part of helping us, helping these teachers, keep these kids focused and learn, then we need to put a microscope on to see what we can do to make that better. And I mean, I, you know, we just can't continue letting this go on. At some point, we have to address it, you know? So that's something that needs to, maybe we need to come from one, from the academic committee to say, we need more money in funding in teachers' assistants, and not just teachers.
Mr. Campbell?
I was thinking along those lines, but not exactly the same thing. What kind of paper trail are we making with the successful student and the successful teacher? What teachers are actually effective in, you know, promoting what we're trying to do?
That reaches into HR, because the teacher evaluation, that system is housed in HR. So principals are trained.
Yeah, yeah, Bonnie, but I'm talking numbers and reflection. You know, it's principal know what teachers are effective in the classroom with the special needs child. And if that teacher effective again the next year with the same support, and the next year with the same support, do we have any kind of statistics to back that up? That's what I...
Are we allowed to participate today? I didn't know.
Oh, you know, I think it's really important that you participate.
Okay, I just didn't want to speak. We've been very quiet, because we didn't know how you were operating it today.
Today, yes. No, I think it's really important, because, you know, I really want this to be real. I mean, we've got to air it and see both sides, because, well, there are more than two sides.
Okay, well, then I'm going to let the parents that I know have direct experience with the things you're talking about right now speak before I speak. I have a different perspective and experience as an advocate, but I know that there are two parents, at least in this room, possibly three, who could speak to the teachers that are successful and how they're being utilized in our schools. They can speak to the resource teachers coming into, pushing into the room in those classrooms. And also, something that I wanted to ask Brenda and Bonnie, what stopgaps are in place? When these kids transfer off an IEP, because now they've met the standard, right, just that month, and you immediately, because what I see is, it's immediate. Like, they pass the map, they have a map score in January or whatever, they're immediately done. Like, they just have the call, the meeting, and they're done. They sometimes, obviously, will go to a 504, and they have accommodations. But what are we doing to track their success after that? Like, what stopgap do we have in place for them to not backslide? Is, are, I know we have the team with the 504, and...
But not every kid.
By theory, and not every kid gets one.
Yeah.
But those...
It's not a...
It's not the consultation.
Right, it's not, right. But there are times when it happens, but it doesn't always happen. And so there's often times that kids, and I, again, I know there's someone in this room can speak to it personally as well, where they are just kind of let go, because, okay, you don't, and then all of a sudden, you're just lost in the system again. And like Leanne mentioned, her son's not even able to write a paragraph effectively in high school, and he doesn't have an IEP, and the curriculum's being modified. So what are we doing to stop that from happening, to actually, because again, I will take this off Brenda, because it's not your job anymore, right? They've qualified now to go back, but we're not, there doesn't seem to be a stopgap in place to catch those kids from sliding back.
Well, we do have MTSS, and actually, there's two different ways for special ed. You have to qualify, meet the eligibility criteria, and then in need of specially designed instruction. So we do have students that might meet the eligibility, but what does the specially designed instruction actually look like?
Right.
You know? But the students that are meeting their IEP goals, and the team feels that they don't need the specially designed instruction, we probably do dismiss them from special education, because there's not the second prong there. But that doesn't mean that they can't be monitored through MTSS. If they're in elementary school, we have math intervention, reading interventionists. If they could be placed in a class that's co-taught with a special education teacher and a general ed teacher, because we're trying to make sure, you know, every school doesn't have multiple special ed teachers, you know? But we're trying to train as many people as we can in general ed to talk about inclusive practices. And actually, Pritchardville really does a good job, because their whole school is all trained with ESOL and such. So that would be the way that we do that, to monitor the child. But actually, it's good core instruction from a teacher that could say that the child needs this extra support here, or the extra support here, if it's an LL learner, because we have a lot of students that are actually twice exceptional, ELL and special education. You know, you have the ESOW teacher. But we do have them in place, they just, it's a communication back to the RTI, MTSS.
And I think that's where there's a big problem. There's a huge hole there, because the parents don't feel that it's responsive, and, you know, timely responsiveness, I should say, or that it's necessarily effective.
And we do have, I will say, I don't...
I know, that's out of your...
Bonnie, but we do have processes and lots of support for folks.
We do, and it's a school-wide phenomenon that should be taking place in every school. And I think every school in the state of South Carolina are, they're all in different places. And a lot of that has to do with the personnel that's in the building.
I agree.
Can the administrator lead that? Do we have the right supports with the right teachers, with the right training in that place? So that's what we're working on, and I know that sounds lame to y'all, but...
Well, yeah, because we've been dealing with it for years. So we have a child now who's 14 years old, who came through the system, and I will say this, I'm going to give Brenda's team credit, and this, and I can say this for most elementary schools, save one that I've experienced with, they're successful in the elementary level. That's not really the problem. When we graduate them, that's when we start having issues. And it's consistent, that I see. It's when they leave that fifth grade, they start sixth, seventh grade, that's when the slip starts happening. And I think you're very successful at the elementary level, absolutely, very successful.
Right, because they're usually, it's a cocooned area. And so I'd like to get back to, you know, Ms. Allman's point, too, about the speech teachers. You know, we have a void of speech teachers. I'd like to suggest that we have, we just have a personnel problem as far as the numbers. You know, so let me, you go to middle school, you've been cocooned in elementary school, you go to middle school, and...
They're departmentalized.
Say, yeah?
They're departmentalized.
That's right.
Yep, yep, and you have one, two, you know, maybe, if you have three grade levels, maybe three special ed teachers, maybe not, maybe two, that are covering three grade levels. And then in most schools, you have a school of choice, so now you've got two different programs, maybe on two different schedules. I mean, it's just, you know, I really, I really think that we have a staffing issue with not enough bodies in the room. So Bonnie, I'd love for maybe the next meeting for you to kind of, you know, maybe give us like a status report. Where are we with staffing? Where are we with, how are we going to turn the corner? How are we going to make this change? I mean, STETSN, inclusion, but inclusion will only work if those teachers have common planning.
That's right. And they have to be effective. If they're not effective...
So we're cutting back, you know, the teacher, the allocations just went out. Schools now have certain number allocated. Well, okay, well, now teachers are taking on more, you know, are we going to make sure that they have common planning? Well, no, because you've got to cover this class. I mean, it's a, it's a, like you said, Mr. Campbell, it is a multi-pronged problem. It's not just special education.
Right, yes, that's true.
It's general education, it's staffing, it's, it's not keeping personnel.
Well, yeah, a couple of things. Let's consider one thing that's also constant. Children grow older, and they, you know, are impressionable. So they don't like the stigmatization of, you know, as they get older.
That's very true.
So that's one thing. But the other thing that, you know, you alluded to, and is very true, is how the classroom teacher is prepared and adjusts to the special needs child. And I think our focus is, it's got to be from that direction, too, quite a bit. We've got to keep those teachers who understand that they have to be special ed teachers, too. When those kids make their transfer, teachers don't accommodate, you know?
It's differentiated instruction.
Right.
And we really try to, with our large ESOW population, try to do the PSYOP model, the Sheltered Construction Observation Protocol. And many of the Southern Beaufort County teachers have all been trained, and a lot of Northern, to address, it's actually good core instruction for all students. There's nothing so special about special education, because general ed teachers can teach special education students to read and do math and to write. Those are our good teachers.
Because they know different approaches, and that's really what, different strategies, different level of approach.
And those are the teachers we need to focus on retaining and getting more.
Right.
But they have to be identified, too.
Well, we actually, I mean, you just left the classroom not too long ago, Mel. You actually, you know, when people sit around and we talk about schedules, we say, we want them in this math class, we want them in this English class, we want them in this social studies class. We do that. We try to schedule our ESOW and SPED students probably first, to make sure, you know, and then the advanced classes, because we know that everyone doesn't have the same skill set. But we're trying to, with offering all these trainings, get everyone so we can all differentiate and work with all the kids, because you're only as good as your weakest link. So if you've got your bottom quartile in your class, you move them up, I mean, and it's just like one child at a time. We start moving, you know, 20% of these students up, you know, the achievement gap's going to close.
Right, and so that's what we need to really focus, focus on, is how are we going to do that? And I believe it goes back to...
Schools.
Schools, goes back to staffing. You know, when you have an inclusion class, and you have 13 students in that class that have IUPs...
Yeah.
You know, when you have an inclusion class and you have 13 students in that class that have IEPs and 13 that don't, that's a very difficult class.
Yes, it is.
And you're not gonna see the growth, and, and that goes back to staffing.
And that's happening, and those teachers, by the way, can I just say, are being exceptionally taxed. They are in IEP meetings for two hours for every one of those 13 kids. And that is constant, constant, once a week, whatever it may be. It is really, really taxing to them. And in some of those classes, there's only one, it's a special, if it's a special ed classroom, there's only one teacher in there and three aides or whatever you have. And she's always, she's not even accessing those kids because she's probably constantly in a, in an IEP meeting.
That's very, and then we have our, typically our science and social studies teachers that get no support. You know, at least you might have an inclusion class and math and ELA, but science and social studies, you have no support. And these kids typically travel in a pack because of scheduling, because of your higher level math and your higher, higher level ELA. So they're traveling in a group, and then they get to science and social studies, you have all these behaviors, and teachers can't teach. Teachers cannot teach, so, and they get-
Well, I did ask, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I did ask for extra staffing. I'm just gonna tell you, we grew 140 students last year. And if you look and see our numbers, then early childhood special ed is really growing. And many of those students need a special ed teacher, an OT, a PT, and a speech therapist. So they actually get hit four times, so that's not just one person, like for an LD student, it's multiple. So I, you know, I prepared a document, shared it with Ms. Allman and did it. So, you know, I did ask, you know, and I look at the state ratios and I actually look at the students because I've said to the director at the state level many times, you can't go based on caseload, you have to go to workload. Because you might get 250 minutes of resource, but this kid gets 900 minutes. That child looks entirely different when you program for the child.
That's right, but, but the staffing at the school, you know, when it stays stagnant, it's just, it's impossible. And we wonder, no, we don't wonder why teachers are leaving, we know why they're leaving.
Absolutely.
It's impossible. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say what Ms. Hunt said is that, she's absolutely right. I mean, my son's at left now. He's been in the SED program since he's three, and since, and he's five now. But when he started at three to now, the amount of kids coming in, they can't handle it over there. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous, and there's not enough staff. But it's also, why is, you know, why is it, if we do, can, if we can't get the staff, is there a way to have each school have its own SED program? Because these teachers have all these kids in one area, and it's, it's burning them out, it's burning the school out. It's frustrating for the kids, and it's frustrating for the parents.
Yeah. We just toured Beaufort L and Beaufort ECC. We made an appointment with your, uh, principal.
Your partner, Bluffton?
I'm sorry, Bluffton.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Bluffton. And we, we heard that, you know, that, that three, three full days were IP meetings, you know?
I just had my son's dad speak, two and a half hours with every, and he has everything she said. She, he has speech, OT, PT, resource, you know, so it's-
Right, and so imagine the, the resource teacher is scheduling that meeting.
Exactly.
Okay, that's an hour alone for, out of a teacher's day night to schedule that meeting. It just, there's-
But it also upsets the kids because, I mean, part of my son's thing is routine. So when his teacher is out and all day with meetings that day, he didn't have a good day.
Right.
Because his routine is, you know-
Yeah, and it's, the second layer of that is when you're in an early childhood special ed class, and I shared at the last meeting, it's a revolving door. So when we have to get referrals from agencies and we have to place them on or before their third birthday, the numbers really do grow. And we do know of the kids that are coming in through the transition conferences so we can kind of plan for them if they meet the eligibility, but we don't know about families coming in or moving in. And we actually have grown. I mean, it's, you know, we've grown from 29 early childhood students to 54. And we're only in March, and we still have April and May. And these are students that are getting identified through Aging with Flare or Baby Net or DDSN or moving into the community or doctors referring them. And then when they do come, some have minor delays. So they're classified as a student with a developmental delay, but some of them have multiple. Speech, vision, OT, PT, some have significant medical needs. So it, that is the classroom that we keep on adding to, and we have three there.
So, so-
Then we're taking our current staffing and we're spreading it out a little bit now, you know, if we're-
A lot of those students, they're not age eligible to mainstream to pre-K because it has to be on or before September 1st to get mainstreamed. So they're in the setting, but, you know, it's like the routine. I recognize that if you have a class of 10, but then we could get four more, and then we could get five more, and then they get dispersed around the classrooms.
Yeah, the early childhood or pre, pre-K, pre-pre-Ks, it's gotta be a focus for us too because the dynamics change fast. When you have children who've never been in pre-K, they've never been identified, they come in with a certain percentage, usually a larger percentage than, than regular identifiable kid, and we've got no resources to adjust to that. So that's another focus. But let's think about how we can, you know, develop better instruction or support. And I think we're, we're on to it in terms of SEDs and, and PSYOPs and things like that that every teacher has to be trained and supported in those efforts, but also monitored that they are applying those, you know? I've, I've taught for 39 years, so I know. Sometimes you go, you pick up the workshop and you, these great ideas, and when you leave, those ideas are there, and they stay there. You wanna incorporate them in the classroom. And it's almost mandatory when you're dealing with special needs children that it's incorporated. You know, a lot of times, just from having a good heart, a teacher incorporates some of those things. But it's just good teaching practice, like you said, ordinarily. If you follow those things, you, you know, PSYOP is just a name for doing the right thing. So we need to monitor teachers to make sure they are using some of those things and not passing the child on.
Right.
Because I don't wanna teach that child. And you got it right. However, you got those answers, whatever you said, it's fine. So those are little things that, that, you know, I think we can do and change some of those numbers.
I, I think we kind of have to look a little bit outside the box and say, what, you know, a lot of the stuff that we've talked about today, we've been talking about for years in special ed and how we support kids and what we do. So, you know, what could we do differently? So let's look, are we having great success with our literacy coaches? Those coaches can't teach students, but they teach teachers and they monitor those students. What about an inclusion specialist with some, you know, I'm just thinking outside of the box. But I think those are the types of things we have to start throwing in the air and see if anybody, you know, if anyone else is using somebody like that.
Sure.
Because I know, you know, I've been in special ed my whole life too, and we've talked about these things. And we know that kids learn if the teacher in front of them is, you know, differentiating instruction, that's it. So what do we do to ensure that the teacher's differentiating instruction? How do we ensure that?
I, I would just like to say real quick, I know I'm new here, but exactly what you just said, I'm 42 years old, so I went in the school district 20-plus years ago. The same stuff you're talking about existed, the same exact stuff. So, yeah, you have to find, so my biggest problem going through was the teacher, once I was mainstreamed, not having the time to, to, so I just fell off. So they were like, oh, you gotta take a test, okay. They did it for me just to move me on. So there has to be a different mindset. When they go mainstream, you've got to, you gotta put that, that teacher has to have a heart. And it's hard because you put 20 kids in one room and five of them are LD. So that teacher can't focus on those five kids because there's 25 kids in the room. So you gotta do something, so we have to figure it out.
We do have to figure it out, yeah.
That's, 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 we're, you know, I feel the pain of that student, and that's why I feel like without putting the pressure on the teacher, we have to prepare the teacher. So that's an automatic response, teachers teaching the proper method, teaching the proper way to cover those students. You don't have to adjust from your usual style because that is your style. And we don't have that, we never have had it.
And I would, sorry, I would also just, just like you said, some teachers aren't, you get pushed into mainstream. Some teachers aren't, they're not equipped to teach LD students. So they get pushed into mainstream and they get, they're like, oh, excuse me, I need help. Not the 20 minutes of resource that doesn't do anything, but I need help. I don't have, they don't have time, so they move on. And then you have someone like me who's very intelligent, but is still, my reading ability is probably not their 10th level, 10th grade. So where is that problem? It's because they don't pay attention, because they, they can't. I don't blame the teacher. So there has to be something that happens. If you can include the student all the way through, you won't lose them.
Right. And, and I do believe, like you've mentioned, like Ms. Hunt said, this is a multi-pronged, and it's not, it's, it's the need for more guidance counselors. We've talked about that the guidance counselors in high school have one hour per student, per year, okay?
Oh, it's insane, they're completely overwhelmed.
Right, I mean, it's, the world has changed, and, and the needs are greater. The social workers, the guidance counselors, the mental health counselors, there, there's, we can do better.
What I wanted to add to this is the, the obvious thing that you can see in Michael himself, the passion, how it affects these kids emotionally. They are very much aware, they're, you know, a lot of these kids are like him, highly intelligent, and they want to succeed. And they want to contribute, and they want to move forward, and it, and we're losing that, I mean, like Leanne's son, we're losing him. We got him to a great place in fifth grade, but then it's just, we ignore it. And that's affecting his social, emotional well-being, his mental health. And we talk about all this stuff, I mean, we, all these tragedies, you read about, just today, another one. And we could address so much of this if we just had the resources in, in the building and in, and in each individual teacher.
Can I add, what, are you out of school now?
I am.
Forty-two, yeah. He's 42.
Okay, so why wouldn't, what, from your experience, what could the schools have done to support you differently? Once you got out there, and maybe this is what we need, we need to get our clients, our old, we need to ask them, what is, how did we miss, what, what could we do to plug in to do that?
I think, that's a tough question.
Okay.
I think, for me, it was a bad teacher. I, I didn't go to school here originally from New York, so-
You mean, there are bad teachers in New York?
Yes.
So, basically, you take what's either an RCT or a Regents exam.
Yeah.
At the end of, I don't know if it's the same here, but-
No.
No, but it's, yeah, Regents, we, yeah, every year tests.
Okay, so I had to do an RCT exam because I didn't qualify for Regents. When they were preparing us for those tests, it, they just, there was such a disconnect between me as a person and the teacher that's trying to teach this. And honestly, because these kids, no matter their, their difficulty, they see it. So what happens is, you try to, you're trying to ask questions and do things, and the teacher is completely disconnected because she doesn't know how to teach you. So they're completely disconnected and they move on. When I took that exam, the teacher took it for me instead of letting me take the exam because I was 20 years old, and in New York State, you have to be out of high school by 21. So they literally said, it doesn't matter because you're gonna graduate. So here I am 40 years old, and it takes me forever to read. You know, it's, and it's not that I'm not intelligent. I was in New York State EMT for nine years, was in the fire primary for 20.
And done some amazing things.
So with your reading difficulty, were you ever exposed to something like Orton Gillingham or Wilson or specialized reading? Do you remember back?
I mean, you're talking a long time ago, but, yeah. Uh, let's see.
Like a specialized, you know, and so-
No, I get what you're saying, I'm just trying to remember, sure, there were different programs, and we're talking mid to late 80s.
Okay.
There were programs, but if I knew what type they were, I couldn't tell you. OT, PT stuff just dropped off, that's the other thing. You hit middle school and that stuff just disappeared. You hit high school and you went mainstream and they went eh. Because you literally just, so they go, no, no, this is great, you're gonna mainstream next year. Okay, but I still need help.
Yeah, that's, that's what I-
So, so what happened for four years is I went, sure, I'm just, and teachers started bumping up my grades and passing me through and doing, it does a disservice to the child. Because when you're done, you still have these problems. You, so it doesn't, that doesn't work. So we have to figure out a way to keep track of these kids.
I know it's past 5:30, so we just have three people that wanna make a comment, so why don't we just, if you could, just keep your comments somewhat, and then we'll, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Sorry if I talk too much.
No, you do not at all.
We need to hear from you.
No, we all, this is, you know, yes, ma'am, could you have?
Yeah, I think I have a question from New York, I have a question to Gary Yang compared. So I, I have a big difference that I'm noticing became here for, I'm explaining, this is my son, however, he has not told him. And he's in a Pugilism at a T and one thing I am noticing differently, when I was in New York, I had an outside person that came every morning before school and helped me like learn with speech and everything to help with different things that I've been dealing with. And I think that helped me tremendously, and it took a burden off of my teachers too, with having to teach me all that. And I think that would be something that is important and something that I would admit too, especially in terms of autistic children, ARD and all that. But she was appointed by the district, but she was subcontracted out. I think what it was, is she went to the different schools, like she would go to different schools and work with the different, work with like the kids that she had under her, her program. I had her from elementary school all the way through high school, and she helped me tremendously. And I think that was really crucial for me being able to be independent and, you know, you know, have a real business now and all that, and, you know, not having to be overlooked. And of course, there's a lot of kids in classrooms, and I think that is the biggest issue with my son's teachers. They wanna help him, they just don't have the time and the resources to do those things. And, you know, by having people that maybe like what they do from different models that they have there, having someone that's subcontracted through the district out and have them have a certain number of kids to take under their wing, and then that's, you know, they can help with the areas of those kids, and you, you know, you back on that.
Thank you, yes, ma'am?
Um, going back to what he said, I think it's more, with my son, at his last meeting, everyone had suspected and said flat out that they thought he had ADHD and a learning disorder, but they were not gonna give him any services whatsoever while he was transitioning to middle school until he was properly diagnosed outside through the school. Despite all of the evidence between his grades, what his teachers were seeing, his MAP scores, because he had a little bit of improvement, it was just revoked. And I think that's something that's happening on a district level, that we are seeing students in all, that are transitioning, and they're just being left behind. They're, you've improved a little bit, so go ahead, but there's not enough follow-up with these students to see if- to see if they're actually keeping this success beyond their services once they're removed. These students are succeeding because of the services. And when they're removed, they're failing. And I think to see this success, you, you need to see without these services. You also need to see what these teachers are missing to provide these services. Because even at the high school level, he has a 504 plan now, but his accommodations, he has to request. And because he feels so self-conscious in front of other students, he won't request, so it does absolutely nothing. And that doesn't help him when he's having to go to the teacher every time he needs his accommodations. And I think the teachers also need to be heard in this as far as what they're needing in the classroom to help make this a success outside of the services.
Mr. Smith?
I was gonna say, I understand exactly what, what, what Fuddy was saying. Because I do, I do see where teachers get frustrated at. And instead of trying to teach you, they feel they have a whole bunch of other kids, especially in resources classes, when you come in there with assignment to do it. Or your IEP said that you can go to resource for special help and you go in there and teachers are frustrated. They said, just sit there and they do the work for you and tell you just, just, just here. And you say, well, what if I don't understand, I don't have, I have you and other people and at times, they're frustrated. So at that point in time, they do your work and they don't understand, once you get out of high school, it affects you. So really, they, not only did they just violate you, but they just took something from you that you'll never get back. And, and, and that's what, another thing that we have, we have to make sure these people are equipped to understand that they, that you just can't do that. You have to take time with them and that goes back to the point of maybe we may need the whole school, me and those resources classes, but maybe we may need more teachers assistance. Or maybe we may need to put three or four spare, spare teachers in one class to help model resources. And I, I mean, and then that's one thing I also want to say, I believe also, I've been visiting some schools, I think that we need teachers assistance back in first grade. Because I'm watching some first grade classes, these teachers, they're catching, they're catching hell. So realistically, I think that, you know, we, we, we start having teachers assistance in certain, in certain, at certain, at certain, our kindergarten, we, we may need teachers assistance up to maybe even, at least first and second, or at least first grade. Because you have a, a large amount of young people running around and you're trying to teach and it's hard. I remember when I was in school, we had, we had teachers assistance in first grade, we had that. And when, where that happened to, we let them go and drop, drop, drop that ball, I don't know where that happened at. But those are things that we have to think about. We, we need, maybe we, maybe we need more, we need more, especially at teachers in the classroom, not just one, maybe we need several of them. And also, we need to put, we need to put more teachers assistance in, in first grade. We need to go back to those two things. I mean, and, 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 and lastly, I would finish it, I think, I would like to see us come up with a comprehensive plan of what we can do moving forth, you know, and, 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 and put a time on it and how, and what is it gonna take to get this, to start getting some of these things done, if we could.
Um, Mr. Campbell?
From what the gentleman says here, what percentage of what he said, do we have, do we have any of that problems?
Well, I would say all the teachers are doing work.
I can attest for it, I would, again, what I said wasn't against the teachers. No, 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 I understand, I just wanted to know what percentage in this district that what you talked about is, is happening in our district?
If issues come to me through a principal or a parent or anything else or an advocate, because we have many advocates, I just left a meeting with another advocate, I pull everyone together, including the principal, and say, let's talk about what the concerns are. Because sometimes that what is said is an actual factual and we, then we all talk about how we can support. So it, you know, that is, it is a communication piece. Because I do sometimes find out, like, something happens or someone will call, but they haven't called me. And I'll, I'll bring business cards next time and I always have my cell phone. I don't sit in the office, no, you're not gonna find me sitting in the office. I'm in schools all the time trying to help the schools. But, you know, I'm not saying it doesn't, but if, I can only help what I'm aware of, you know.
Mr. Smith mentioned about assistance, then we as a board can make that decision. Because we have to talk in front. So that is something I just should start off about now, really, really.
Which means, I think we need to look about, you know, we all agree that human capital is worth more than some of the other stuff we're spending money on. We need to look at, at, you know, maybe all of our first graders don't need tablets. You know, maybe the tablets aren't needed until third grade.
I could tell you the parents would probably applaud you for that statement.
You know, starting in third grade, they can get it, like, you know, maybe those are the types of things that we can look at to make, to free up money for human capital. Because human capital is what's edu, what is, what education's all about, so. And so like you said, Ms. Remine, you know, thinking outside the box. How can we shift some things around? How can we stop talking about this, the same stuff we've been talking about for twenty years, for thirty years?
Yeah, I was gonna say thirty-something.
Right, right, and it boils down to that. And all these things are kind of all coming together, the, the, the social workers, the mental health counselors, the, the school psychologists, they don't have time to work with teachers and have time to work with schools. They're in IEP meetings and they're, you know, we, we need to think outside the box. So Ms. Almond, I think with that, you know, a status report, what, what, what are we thinking about for next year? Ms. Hunt, I'm so excited to know that you've asked for extra people.
Well, we base it on what the state says and we had a hundred and four, I shared last time, we grew a hundred and forty students from October to October. And many of those students, students need multiple services, so.
Right, right, yeah, yes, sir?
And that's been our problem too. We so often allow the state to dictate our programs, our process. They have standards, but we can enhance those standards. We can do more than what the state regulations are. And Brenda's trying to, to get enough to follow the state regulation. We shouldn't be thinking about what the state regulation is in, in Beaufort County. And that's another part of, of our thing. We go too much by that guideline and we know traditionally, South Carolina is not gonna put the money toward general education first, much less those state restrictions for special education. So we have to think a little bit differently.
Right, what does the state say? Sixty for speech therapists?
I'm gonna tell you, the, the state says sixty for speech therapists. Keep in mind that the therapists and the IEP determine whether they need to, individual or group. If you're a stutterer or an Arctic person, you might need, and it depends on your age, you might need individuals. So if you have sixty and there's only thirty-seven and a half hours a week that you're in school, a sixty, you can't do sixty to one. There's not enough time in the day or the week to service kids. So that's something that, you know, I'm very vocal about saying, you know, we have to work, workloads, not caseloads. For resource teachers, I will tell you, the state says thirty-three to one.
No way.
I mean, I've been a resource teacher. I mean, thirty-three students and you're a singleton in a school, pre-K through.
No, that's insane.
Five.
That's insane.
I mean, you can't actually do that.
That is insane.
So we've lowered, we've lowered the ratios. Schools that are larger, that have multiple teachers, it's a, it's a lot easier to program for. But if you're a singleton teacher in a smaller school, you are the only person.
And, and, so I, again, I know we can do better. I know we can because it is the human capital, it is the thinking outside the box. And, and we just have to, because we can't be in the same position a year from now. And we can't be in that same position a year from then. We have to keep making this progress. Mr. Campbell, you want to say something?
Well, the question I was going to raise is, what did the professional associations say about what their ratio should be? Every national organization will tell you, based on their certification, their training, what the student to resource person should be as a guide. It's not biblical, it's not something that's, states, no, but at least it gives you some parameter of where you are. And let's ask the professionals. We ask the nurses, we ask the bus drivers, we ask the coaches, let's ask the professionals what, how many they can handle.
I think you're already referring to like NAS, what they say.
Yes, National Association.
NAS will say one school psychologist per thousand. Okay, so.
Well, I'm not sure where.
No, but I'm just saying, those are some of the national averages that they'll say in organizations per, you know, and so that, is that what you're referring to, L L R for OTs and PTs?
What I read, based on the national associations, is that Beaufort County way exceeds what the national organizations recommend, particularly in the social work, the guidance counselors, the social emotional.
Well, I will say that they don't for school psychologists and our OTs and PTs are licensed.
I don't know all of them, you know, I'm only sharing with you, and it's only a recommendation to consider.
And we do, I actually look at, because my OTs and PTs are licensed through the state of South Carolina, L L Rs. You know, many of the states will say like forty, but then keep in mind, I have a PT that serves fifteen schools. So that could be fifteen students, which doesn't sound like a lot, but working with fifteen schedules and fifteen schools, you're spending a lot of time traveling. So, you know, I do look at that and it's, you know, we try, if it's consult or, you know, if it's direct PT or if it's making sure you have access to the environment, because there's the medical model versus a school model. So, you know, there's lots of criteria. And we do actually.
Let's look at all of them then, let's, let's look at what the school model says, because right now, the internet's not working here. Otherwise, I would refer you to some of the examples that I have in mind.
Are you talking for special ed teachers or are you talking just in general for all personnel?
I'm just using the concept of school guidance counselors. The National Association of School Guidance Counselors and the National Association of School Psychologists. I'm referring to the school, not the medical association, but the school association.
I know, I've seen those before.
They're available, I just can't get them.
Yeah, I've seen them before, but I can't.
They all provide the guidance.
Yeah, they provide the guidance, but, you know, these communities adjust according to, to their affluence, to their, to their desires and stuff like that, you know.
And their outcomes, they should, they should.
Yeah, what they're looking for, right? So, you know, yeah, those are minimum in my mind. And, and if you wanna be successful, you have to do a little bit more than minimum, especially in today's climate.
We should at least meet the minimum.
Yeah, well, we probably do.
You can tell you, counselors are short.
The last thing on the agenda is we're gonna set our next meeting. We, we tried to do it like on that third Wednesday, but things have kind of gotten out of, of filter here. And the next third Wednesday is during spring break. So, and people have, on the committee have some plans. So, Mr. Campbell, would April twenty-third, which is a Tuesday, Tuesday, April twenty-third, could that work?
Tuesday, April twenty-third.
Isn't that a board meeting day?
No, the sixteenth, sixteen during that spring break is a board meeting.
Oh, you have a board meeting during spring break?
Spring break.
So the following Tuesday, twenty-third.
All the students can come to the board meeting.
Does that work?
I'll wait for me out, I'll wait.
Twenty-third, so you're gonna do it on a Tuesday and not the Wednesday?
Just this time.
Okay.
Okay. Four-thirty to six? Okay, all right.
Twenty-second, so we're gonna, we lead it.
Tuesday, April. It's heritage, Mr. Campbell.
I know. About a week early, yeah.
Well, I don't know if we're gonna do it here. You're gonna come back here or you're gonna do north abroad?
We're gonna do it here. I think we're gonna do it here.
We try to keep all the academics, unless there's a meeting, try to keep it here.
Well, I have a question, why don't we give the people on, on that side of abroad a chance to come too? Maybe, I mean, if, because, you know, we, I think we hear a large amount there, out there and things. I think we need to advertise on that side of abroad too and see if we have any academic issues.
You know, Mr. Smith, we're gonna hold it here next, the next meeting on the twenty-third. And, and I will try to do a better job of advocating to the schools north of abroad. Because we did have it there, you know, two weeks ago and, and no one came. So let's just try to stay consistent having it here and I'll try to do a better job.
Right, but I, I don't wanna get caught catering to one, one community versus others. When I think, I think, I think, we've, we've advocated to this, this community here and they, they know what's going on versus the other side of the community, I mean, versus the other side abroad.
Okay, well, I think that, why don't we discuss that? Okay, we can have a conversation about that, but we'll schedule it for here for on the twenty-third. And at that meeting, Ms. Almond, you're going to give us a status report? Okay, great, great, all right. A motion to have the meeting adjourned?
That's what.
No, second?
I'll say.
Call in favor? Thanks for coming, everyone.